Call this special meeting director Tanja Board of Trustees to order. Clerk Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here.
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King is absent. Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here. Forum's present. The purpose of the meeting is to talk about employee matters, attorney-client privilege, legal opinion, as well as purchase in installation of MDIS of CCTV cameras and installation and renovations to the gun range here at Town Hall. So first on the agenda is the employee matters and attorney-client privilege. Because we have attorney-client privilege, we probably should go into close, if that's the pleasure of the board.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we go into closed session to hear the attorney's legal opinion support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. McCray.
Yes. Motion passes. Wanting to close, everybody. All green?
Yep.
Okay, we're back in open session. The first thing on the agenda, we went into closed session just to have our discussion with the attorney. After that, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move to approve the proposed separation agreement as presented by the township attorney in closed session and to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement on behalf of the township.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. So the motion is, I moved to approve the proposed separation agreement as presented by the township attorney in closed session and to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement on behalf of the township. Roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. McCray.
Yes. Motion carries.
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I move to accept the retirement of Police Chief Jezzerowski.
Yep.
Effective immediately.
Just supported by Trustee Jackson. The motion is to move to accept the retirement of Police Chief Jezzerowski effective immediately. Any discussion?
They don't have anyone taking medicine.
First, take your medicine.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so, okay. Yes, yes. So the motion is to move to accept the retirement of Police Chief Jezzerowski effective immediately. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie. Yes. And Mr. McCray.
Yes, motion passes. Okay, so I think I have what I have to do. That's not one, this, one right here. There you go.
Okay, I'm gonna send everybody a sign down.
Thank you, thank you.
Along with the letters, I'll send the book.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, and thank you guys for all the work.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas to you.
Because we won't be meeting again before Christmas.
No.
Well.
Don't come back.
Yes, yes. Yeah, well.
We love you, but...
Yes. All right.
Late, late next year.
Next is Director Bonnerak, and we're gonna talk about cameras.
Great, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening, Honorable Board. When the opportunity arose to be able to have a special meeting tonight, I asked the supervisor if we could add this item and the subsequent item that Captain Mansfield will be speaking about, because both are, both deal with security matters. And so if we could move forward of them versus waiting until after the first of the year, I thought that would be beneficial. In this instance, we have been talking, all of the departments have been talking with MDIS, which is the company that has been providing our post-caption TV and video camera monitoring systems township-wide for several years. And there was a whole list of projects that were just kind of waiting in the queue. And one of the big ones that was in there that has been causing problems is that the system that is at the police department for the jail cells is quite outdated. They're still on analog cameras, they're not even on digital. And so that is one of the projects that's in here, along with a multitude of other projects, including things like additional cameras in the property room and the safe rooms and exterior things, a better coverage over at the DPS building, et cetera. So I brought them all to you as one package. We have funds for this purpose sitting in the Capital Reserve Fund, and so that's why I'm asking that you will consider approving this purchase and installation.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Adam, for pushing this forward. It's been needed for a while, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Um.
Go ahead. That's okay.
I just, I move, uh...
Okay.
To, um, I move to purchase the installation of the MDIS of CCTV camera equipment township-wide in a total amount of $94,984.65 to be paid through the Capital Reserve Fund.
Second. Supported by Clerk Christie. So the motion is to purchase and install the installation by MDIS of CCTV camera equipment township-wide in a total amount of $94,984.65 to be paid through the Capital Reserve Fund. Any other questions? Hearing unroll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. McCray.
Yes. Thank you. Director Bonnerak. Captain Mansfield.
Good morning, good evening. I'm still on midnight schedule, guys. Hello, Honorable Board, how are you? Thank you for letting me come before you today. I am here to address our gun repair, our gun range repair and update proposal that you guys should have in your packets. It may come as a surprise to you that our gun range has had little to no upgrades since that building was built. Things considered, I think it's gone pretty well, but we're having some very serious safety concerns with our backstop with shrapnel coming back at us, and some of the baffles at the top are causing that to happen. So we're looking to get that repaired, as well as some really cool updates to our targeting system that's down there that's gonna help prepare our officers. It's closed down, and in fact, today they were at the Dearborn Heights Range qualifying, which is part of our annual qualifications, obviously, sometimes it happens that way. What I am asking is for the approval of the repair and purchase of backstop materials as well as a new range system through the Inveris Training Solutions that you see there in your package. The combined quote price is $131,742.2. My understanding is that $125,000 of that was already approved through ARPA funds. So even with adding the repair to the backstop, which was not part of the original plan, we're only slightly over that. Our range is gonna be closed for the next three to six months, even if with the approval today, just because it takes so long to get those parts in. today, just because it takes so long to get those parts in. Inveras is currently the company that maintenancees our range now. They put it in. They're one of the very few in the country that do this, and we are very excited to partner with them if you grace us with your approval. Any questions for me?
Questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the purchase and installation of Inveras to complete the renovation and repairs to the Lieutenant John Butler Gun Range in a total amount of $131,742.2 to be paid through the capital reserve fund.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Kavanaugh. So the motion is to purchase and installation by Inveras to complete renovations of the repairs of the Lieutenant John Butler Gun Range in a total amount of $131,742.2 to be paid through the capital reserve fund. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. McCray.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you very much. Would you, do you need a couple extra copies of that, sir?
Of which?
The quotes, the combined one.
Do you guys need any? No.
No, you guys are good.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
No other meaning? This has come from the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Bravo.
By 27.